Welcome, everyone. I now call this meeting of the Somerville City Council to order. In accordance with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2023, this meeting of the city council may be conducted via remote participation. Please note that video and audio of this meeting is being recorded and may be shown live on local access government channels and on the city of Somerville's website and will be available for future review. Will the clerk please call the roll?
This is roll call. Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yeah.
Counselor Davis.
Present.
Counselor Said.
Present.
Counselor Scott.
Present.
Counselor Mbah.
Present.
Counselor Burnley.
Present.
Counselor Klingon.
Present.
Counselor Strezzo.
Present.
Counselor Pineda Neufeld.
Present.
Counselor Ewan Campan.
Here.
With nine counselors present and two absent, we have a quorum.
Excellent. Counselor Davis will be here momentarily. Counselor Mbah is in the process of graduating from the Harvard Kennedy School. We wish him congratulations. And just for folks who aren't in this room, the AC is broken. So if we all start nodding off and losing consciousness, that is why. Pursuant to our Rule 32, let it be known that this city council salutes the flag of the United States of America. Let us recall our oath to uphold the Constitution and the laws of the Commonwealth to the best of our abilities and understanding. We will begin this meeting with a moment of silence. Are there counselors wishing to speak on community members tonight? All right. Everyone who is able, if you'll please rise for a moment of silence. Thank you. So colleagues, we're going to start tonight with a presentation. This is Item 8.3 on the agenda. Director Gallagani is going to give a presentation on some workshops that OSPCD has been doing on commercial and residential development. We also have an executive session to get an update on collective bargaining with public employee unions. That is going to happen at some point after 8:15 when the staff becomes available. So we'll take that up as we get to it, potentially in order. So with that, let's go to 8.3, please.
Why don't we first take up Item 1.3, Approval of the Minutes of the Regular Meeting of April 25, 2024.
Seeing no discussion, those are approved. Laid on the table for approval.
And then that will bring us to Item 8.3, An Officer's Communication From the Executive Director of the Office of Strategic Planning and Community Development, Reporting on Recent Workshops on Housing Development and Filling Office and Life Science Spaces.
The floor is yours. Is that Director Ned Karne? I can't quite see.
Should we, Director Gallagani? Uh, he's here.
Oh, oh, here he is. He's here in person.
Mr. President, with the fans going around us, can I just ask folks to speak up today? Thanks.
Yes, colleagues, please speak up. Welcome, Director. You're up.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Tom Gallagani. I lead a team of over 80 professional problem solvers working in the Office of Strategic Planning and Community Development. When I really stop to think about what we do in OSPCD, I can sum it up in the following way. We work hard to bend capitalism.
Director, I'm sorry. Can you speak louder than you normally would because of these fans?
Oh, wonderful.
Thank you.
We work hard to bend capitalism. We bend, we mold, we focus, and we redirect capitalism to benefit the city and its stakeholders. At OSPCD, we also do the Somerville thing. We look at problems square in the eye, the toughest ones. We work in partnership with you, our community, to break them down and find solutions that allow Somerville to take control of its own destiny. We need some help tackling our latest problem. I've come to you tonight to share news about what's happening in our real estate market and its impact on Somerville. I'm worried that our market rate and inclusionary housing pipeline may be drying up. I and my team are worried that the gleaming new lab buildings opening up around our city won't open with tenants. We're worried about the impact this slowdown will have on our ability to deliver on our goals and our ability to pay our bills. We've made amazing progress over the past few decades reshaping this city, and this wasn't an accident. We all worked together, the administration, the city council, our stakeholders, worked hard to bend, mold, focus, and redirect capitalism to change our tax base. New developments have filled our coffers and allowed us to develop the resources to tackle even bigger problems. We're working on addressing displacement and catching up on fixing our aging infrastructures. This new development allows us to dream even bigger dreams. You may not have noticed by looking at all the cranes in the sky all around our city, but things have changed. Two years ago, the impact of global events began to trickle down to us, our post-pandemic world, the war in Ukraine, inflation, higher interest rates. All these events are being felt locally. These conditions are impacting our housing and commercial real estate markets. These conditions are threatening to put a pause on our housing and jobs success stories. The pace of real estate growth has slowed. We hear it when we talk to those who are filling our new life science spaces and building our inclusionary housing. You've probably read about it, too. Rising development costs are making it much more difficult to launch new housing developments across greater Boston, just when the region needs housing the most. The post-pandemic correction in the life sciences market may leave us with too many new buildings to fill and not enough new businesses to fill them. Competition is heating up to land these scarce companies, and empty life science buildings generate far fewer taxes than those teeming with tenants and workers. We just found out that the lab project at 15 McGrath is on pause. The developers broke ground on this 270,000-square-foot project and had to stop. It's just a hole in the ground right now that would have generated $3 to $4 million in new tax revenue every year and another $3 million plus in new housing linkage fees. Yikes, but what could they do? They were building something that probably would have remained empty for some time. Hopefully, they'll start again at some point. So we had to do the Somerville thing when faced with a problem. We tackle it head-on. This administration has been working tirelessly over the past two years to ensure that our most important projects launch through these headwinds. We all came together at 299 Broadway. We used every tool in our toolbox to keep that project alive, and we hope it's going to work. We're doing it again at Clarendon Hills. Things look great. POA broke ground on the first phase of that project, but our market rate developer walked away, throwing that project into uncertainty. For the past eight months, my team and I have been working closely with the Housing Authority on a creative approach to put the second phase back on track and then eventually finish the rest. We'll be coming to you in the next few months with a solution, and we'll need your help to get it back on track. Now I want to talk about our pipeline of inclusionary housing projects and what we can do to unlock housing production. We started by bringing people together. We held a series of workshops, and some of you were part of those, and I appreciate that. We brought together the people that build our inclusionary housing, our nonprofit housing developers, the OSPCD staff in housing, housing stability, economic development, and planning, housing advocates, neighborhood advocates. Next slide, please. We brought them together so that we could all understand the problems that these projects face. We learned that the cost of money has gone up. Rising interest rates have made it much more expensive to finance these projects. The cost of construction has gone up. Construction cost inflation continues to be a problem. We're also told that some of our development requirements add to these costs. We learned that rents have flattened on average. This might be good news for some renters, but you can see how this makes it more difficult to overcome these other rising costs and pay to launch new projects. This just squeezes their margins. Next slide, please. Credit is tightening. Developers find it more difficult to find adequate funding to launch their projects, and less competition for their projects means higher prices. The cost of land remains high. Landowners are stubborn, and I can't blame them, but they're still expecting to get paid today for 2021 land values. But that's not the reality, so things are stuck. We also came to understand that we're losing projects that were viable just a few years or months ago. Permitted, ready-to-launch projects might remain on life support for the time being. Over the next few years, Somerville may see a significant drop in the pace of new residential construction, and that means less new inclusionary housing production. But we do the Somerville thing. We asked, what can Somerville do today to save some of these projects that are teetering on the edge? Next slide, please. We want to find ways to keep our pipeline of projects alive, so we encourage people to brainstorm. No idea was off the table, and we want to share these ideas with you today. We haven't reviewed them at any length, but we wanted to offer them up and think about a strategy. Some folks thought about zoning relief, and some ideas were buy-right upper-story residential in MR zones, clarifying standards for ground-floor commercial on non-pedestrian streets, eliminating upper-story setbacks for four- to six-story buildings on wide streets. And we know many of you around the table are eager to make changes to our zoning code to increase the supply of housing. And my team is excited to work with you on these solutions. We're already at work. There's a lot we can do, and you also know that zoning is often a slower tool. It may not help to jumpstart the current batch of projects today. Some thought that it would be helpful if we reduced our building permit fees. They noted correctly that our fees are the highest in the region. Others thought it might be helpful to delay collecting building permit fees until the project's finished. That way, we could slightly reduce the cost of building and even out their cash flow to make projects more viable. Some recognize that the UCTIF program, tax break, could provide a significant incentive for housing creation. You approved a generous UCTIF deal at 299 Broadway that was a game changer. Would the city be willing to use this tool to launch other projects? Next slide, please. We had a number of provocative ideas brought forward about changes to inclusionary housing. We all agreed that reducing our 20% requirement is probably off the table, but we thought, what if we phased in our 20% inclusionary requirement over 10 years? We'd still meet our goals, and we might jumpstart a project today instead of waiting five years for it to launch or even longer. One person thought it would be helpful to exempt linkage fees from ground-floor commercial space in mixed-use residential buildings. We also talked about if we could use project-based rental vouchers as a tool to augment the rent for inclusionary housing units. That might beef up the viability of some projects. Next slide, please. We're also exploring new financing approaches. Mass Housing is launching a new program this summer to provide access to funds at better terms that can be found in the market. We're also taking a look at a 60-year-old federal code to see if there's a creative way to finance these kinds of stuck projects. In the next couple of weeks, we're going to be doing another workshop, bringing Mass Housing and the experts in federal Code 6320 for a follow-up workshop with developers of stuck projects. We also held another workshop focused on the challenge of filling commercial space in our new gleaming life sciences buildings. You can see it all around the city. We have over 2 million square feet of space ready to open the next two years with few tenants lined up. We know that until these buildings are full, we likely won't see any more life science buildings break ground. We also know that building valuations and tax revenues will fall if these buildings aren't filled quickly. So we brought together the people that build our life science buildings, the people that market these life science buildings, industry experts who understand how life science companies choose a home, state leaders who provide incentives for these companies to train and hire workers, my staff in housing, economic development, workforce development, and planning, community advocates, bankers. We learned a lot. Next slide. Oh, you're on the right slide. We learned that Kendall Square remains the center of the region's life sciences industry. Companies all across the world want to be part of the rich network of firms, venture capital, research institutions, and brains that populate this cluster. This is where companies want to be. As Kendall Square filled up over time, it created opportunity for a cluster to spill out over into other neighborhoods in greater Boston. This happened, oh, back up, please. This happened at the Longwood Medical Center. First, and about 10 years ago, this cluster spilled into the Seaport, later to Watertown, Alwife, and Alston. And as you know, we've spent 15 years problem-solving about how Somerville could capture some of this spillover, and it's happening now. We're on the verge of establishing a viable subcluster, taking advantage of our transportation network, our proximity to Kendall Square, our amenity-rich environment, our cool factor. This positioned us as a lower-cost, hipper version of Kendall. We also learned that the region is experiencing the largest glut of life science space in its history. Next slide, please. Over 16 million square feet of new life science space is expected to open up in the region by 2026. Over 2 million square feet will open in Somerville. Venture capital investments in the life sciences ramped up significantly before the pandemic and then just exploded right at the pandemic. Lots of new companies were funded. Also during this pandemic, real estate investment pivoted away from office space, retail, and housing, and flooded into the life sciences sector. The result is an unprecedented construction boom, one that's poised to become a bust. Next slide, please. Over time, the regional absorption rate, the annual amount of new space companies move into, is about 1.5 to 2 million square feet of space. At this rate, it's going to take approximately 10 years to fill up that space. This is not a good thing. In the coming months and years, it's going to make the real estate market cutthroat among landlords and among communities as we all compete to land these scarce growing companies. We also learned that for the first time in a decade, there's substantial blocks of space that are available in Kendall Square. This is happening as big firms' growth plans recede and they seek to sublet their unused space. Next slide, please. We learned that high interest rates are causing companies to preserve cash as much as possible. This is incentivizing companies to seek lower-cost space and locations. A few years ago, companies could afford to pay whatever was necessary to grab any space that was available. Flush with venture capital, they could afford whatever they wanted. A few shortly years later, the tables have turned. Every dollar is precious, and is needed to keep a company alive. Now they have dozens of choices for space in the region. Companies are in the driver's seat for the first time in a decade. We learned that Somerville's competitive advantage has eroded. Right now, thrifty companies can find sublease space in Kendall Square exactly where they want to be for less money than new space in Somerville. Somerville's higher property taxes make us a high-cost option among our submarket peers in Watertown and Alston and South Boston. Competition is going to continue to accelerate. Making matters worse, we also learned that the life science industry in greater Boston is very well-connected, and that good news and bad news travels fast. If we gain the reputation as a high-cost location, everyone will know quickly. If we create positive attention by doing something noteworthy, that could help us, too. By the way, a similar thing is happening in the office market for different reasons. We all know post-COVID, working from home has become the norm. Companies need less space. We're now dealing with a glut of office space in the region, especially in places like downtown Boston and in Cambridge. Rental rates are dropping fast. Rates are too low, and demand is too weak to justify any new office construction for the foreseeable future. Those who fill our office space report that we're losing our brand positioning as a lower-cost, amenity-rich downtown Boston alternative. For the first time in recent memory, companies find it cheaper to lease space in downtown Boston than in Somerville, and receive more amenities, more transit access, more restaurants, more cafes. This helps attract talent. So we brainstormed about solutions, but these ideas are going to take some work. Next slide, please. Oh, you're on the right one. Thank you. Most felt that it was imperative that Somerville addressed the cost differential, particularly as it relates to commercial property taxes. Most felt that Somerville should consider tax breaks to lure pioneering life sciences firms to Somerville. This is something that Somerville hasn't considered in 30 years. Using the state's Economic Development Incentive Program to level-set these costs with our competing subclusters, it might also send a strong signal to the hyperconnected life sciences ecosystem that Somerville is a place to get a deal done. We also talked about opportunities to ramp up our marketing efforts. We discussed about exciting opportunities to put Somerville on the life sciences map. Bio2025, the largest life sciences conference in the world, returns to Boston next year. That's a unique opportunity for us to bring the essence of Somerville to the conference or bring conference attendees out to Somerville. Rachel Ned Karne, our Director of Economic Development, is focused on this opportunity to tell our story to the life sciences world. The landlords who attended the workshop thought it would make a lot of sense for the city and landlords to jointly fund a targeted life sciences marketing effort focused on Somerville. We all have so much to gain, and we all have lots to lose if we do nothing. Also, we should leverage the Somerville Squares marketing effort the Economic Development Team is set to launch this summer. Finally, officials from the Mass Life Sciences Center, the agency that invests tax credits and makes grants to organizations that train workers, were bullish about working collaboratively with Somerville. What if we leveraged our investments from the Jobs Trust to incentivize firms to hire our residents and invest in our workforce development ecosystem? Next slide, please. So where do we go from here? Feels like a lot. Well, we briefed the mayor last week, gave her a similar presentation, gave her a sense of what's going on, and she felt that it was critical that we bring this message and these ideas directly to you. From here, OSPCD is going to do the Somerville thing. We're going to tackle these problems head-on. I've asked my team of problem solvers, especially the teams that Rachel, Mike Filoni in housing, and Sarah Lewis in planning, the ones that they lead, to spend the next few months picking apart, testing, and refining these ideas. I want them to do what they do best, figure out new ways to mold, shape, focus, and bend capitalism to benefit Somerville and its stakeholders, keeping in mind the new market realities. When you return after the summer, we'll be prepared to bring back fully-vetted concepts, strategies, and likely a few deals you can consider. I'm convinced that we can put Somerville in a position to lead the region in terms of new housing production, new inclusionary production, and filling commercial spaces. I'm confident that we can figure out a way to solve these problems and continue our housing and job successes. We need to do this together. I am open to any thoughts and suggestions you might have now, later tonight, or anytime over the next few months. I certainly appreciate your time this evening, especially as we begin a very busy season. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Director. Let's open it up for questions. Counselor Burnley, is that handy?
Thank you. Through the chair, I'll try to be brief, but I have a question, a comment, and a question, and I just want to state that for the record so we can get my other colleagues, including Counselor Davis, in there. To start with a question, Director, you cited 15 McGrath in your statements. I just want to know if any of this also has to do with 350 Assembly Row, where Federal Realty Investment Trust has delayed a lab project because of oversaturation in the market? Is that a part of the thinking that's also been brought into this presentation?
Through you, Mr. President. Absolutely. You just saw that notice yesterday. We kind of knew that was the case. We talk regularly with the folks at Federal Realty, and they have a fully-permit building, and they realized that in this market, with this glut of lab space, it would make no sense for them to build that without a tenant. So you're absolutely right.
Okay. Through the chair. So that's the first question, and I thank you for acknowledging that. And I want to acknowledge, as a counselor, that I think the issues that you were describing are real. I think that the market in some respects is oversaturated, and I am very in favor of bending capitalism to the ease of our residents. I think anyone who knows me would back me up on that. I do want to say, though, that I do have some concerns with some of the proposals that have been brought forward, just based on what my constituents have said. The idea of phasing in the 20% inclusionary, I feel like is a nonstarter for me personally. You know, most of the constituents I talk to are asking me if we can raise that inclusionary rate up rather than slow it down. So that seems contrary to at least where our residents are, and I'm willing to have a robust and realistic conversation about what people want versus what the city needs. But it seems contrary to where the needs are currently. And I'll also say that, you know, as a former Alston resident, and as someone who knows how the city of Somerville feels about Kendall Square, many of our residents don't want to be anywhere in this community to be even similar to what Kendall Square is currently. And I think we need to find a way to reduce costs, which I am very in favor of. Some of my colleagues may remember, one of the first things I did on this council was try to fight for tattoo equity, which is a throwback. And I will note, I don't have tattoos, but we suspended costs in terms of permitting fees for tattoo businesses in this city because our costs as a city were out of line with other regions in the state. And I think where Somerville does not have a competitive advantage, we should look into that. And at the same time, we need to be mindful of what these costs do to our renters in housing. And so, bringing me to my last question, because one of the things we talked, you mentioned, was the flattening of rents. And as a renter, it's not something I've experienced, and it's not the experience of many of the constituents I talk to. So, for example, when you speak about raising the height of buildings by right on non-pedestrian streets, I guess I'm curious, what do non-pedestrian streets look like in Somerville? What's the criteria? It's hard for me to even think about a street where we're not adjoined to residential areas in the city.
Thank you. Through the President. Pedestrian streets are a defined term in our zoning code, and so we place different kinds of restrictions on pedestrian streets. The busy streets, the main thoroughfares, we restrict things like putting in office space on the first floor so that we can enrich the pedestrian environment and experience.
Thank you. Through the chair, I will definitely be looking into that personally, just to make sure I'm caught up in how we're defining that. I know that Cambridge is considering raising their heights by right across the city, and I never want to see Somerville fall behind Cambridge. But I do think that this is a very nuanced conversation, and we have to make sure that we're not welcoming in large businesses at the expense of our residents. So thank you.
Thank you. I have Counselor Wilson, then Davis, then Strezzo.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Through you, too, Director Gallagani. You'd mentioned Mass Housing's new program. A little hard to hear, but with all the background noise, but did I hear you characterize that as basically a below-market financing option for new housing?
Through the President, yes. In the housing bond bill that has yet to be passed on Beacon Hill, we expect it'll be passed sometime in the next month or so, there's a provision for a new financing tool. Mass Housing knows that they are going to be the entity that's going to implement that program. So they're brainstorming right now, before it gets passed, to try to figure out what the correct market intervention is. When I talk to them, and we'll find out more in a couple of weeks when they come and give a presentation, we're going to bring some developers together so they can hear the pitch and hopefully inform refinement of the program before it launches. They tell me it's not necessarily lower-cost financing, but more available financing and a combination of debt and equity. Not sure what that means, but we'll find out in a couple of weeks, because that is one of the challenges that some of these developers are identifying. It's hard for them to find their equity source as well as get debt financing. So Mass Housing is very bullish and thinks that this is going to be something, and I want it to be something here in Somerville. I want to line up our projects that are stuck, hopefully utilize that program, and maybe some other things that we can do to get some projects moving forward.
Through the President, I'm glad you mentioned the governor's housing bond bill. Are we seeing anything else in that? Obviously, it's not a done deal yet, but have you seen anything else in that that you think might be additional tools we could use here?
Through the President, I think there are definitely a number of tools there. There's a lot of focused funding for different programs and more funding for some of the programs that we are very familiar with. I mean, I'd have to get back to you about some of the different details about what makes sense.
All right. Through the President, I just want to highlight one key one we've heard a lot about is social housing that is going to be included here. I assume you're looking into that, but if not, just a plug for that. I guess the last thing I had was the switch that you mentioned potentially on the inclusionary housing requirement from 20% of units to 20% of square footage. Do we envision that leading to more affordable 2-, 3-, 4-bedroom units than what we're currently seeing?
Through the President, that was the intimation, that if we had some more flexibility, we might be able to create more family units. But obviously, if you do the math, that would result in less units overall in inclusionary.
Yeah. Through the President, I'm generally not a fan of reducing number of affordable units, but I guess we do have a lack of affordable family units in the city. That is one approach that I personally would be willing to hear more about. Thanks.
Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, to Director Gallagani. Thank you for this presentation. Thank you for pulling together these groups. So I was fortunate enough to listen in to the second of the two workshops with the commercial developers. Thank you to the director for inviting me there. It was a fascinating conversation. I have pages of notes, most of which are illegible, but I know what I meant. And I just want to hit on a few points. And the first is that, you know, to that point of having these workshops, you know, Director Gallagani spoke about, once the word gets out, you know, the word is out, right? And then it's really... And then, it's a lot harder to change the conventional wisdom out there than it is to, you know, get in front of it. And so, I think that's a really important point. But I also heard somebody say, the fact that we at Somerville are having these workshops is extraordinary. At least one person said, "This isn't happening in other cities that they're aware of." So, credit to the administration, to Director Galagani, Director Narcani, and everyone who went, you know, put the time into this. They, you know, folks took note of that. So, that's a good first step, right? You know, I think that I hesitate to sort of embrace solutions for this particular challenge using zoning, sort of as a general approach, because zoning, I think objectively, or at least in my opinion, is a long-term tool that we have. And this is... This was conveyed in at least the meeting that I intended as a short-term problem. People said that the discussion at that particular meeting was very heavily focused on life sciences. It wasn't exclusive to life sciences, but that was the bulk of the folks in the room for reasons that are obvious, based on the slides that we saw and where the development has been. But that the long-term fundamentals of life sciences are good, and the long-term fundamentals of Somerville are good. That's a direct quote. And so, but at the same token, the competitive advantage that we had, Somerville had, is gone due to outside forces. Obviously, the pandemic, the Russian invasion of the Ukraine was mentioned several times, just that impact on the interest rates, all of the things that are outside of our control. And so, it's important right now that we find a way to push to keep some momentum going through this market downturn or trough, or whatever you want to call it, however you want to characterize it. So, I very clearly came away with the impression that this is a relatively short-term challenge that we need to find a way through such that when the market as a whole is through it, Somerville is standing there and benefiting from that upswing rather than having been surpassed by the other submarkets. To be clear, no one is suggesting that we want to be like Kendall Square. We couldn't be if we wanted to, right? From what I clearly... Kendall Square is the gold standard, and there are submarkets like, according to these people, and there are submarkets like Somerville, like Austin, Watertown, that the good director mentioned. So, you know, I see zoning as an excellent tool for things, as we have already done with affordable housing, with long-term visioning. I think, and this is something that I've had conversations with and said in this forum many times over the last five years, addressing the challenges of our small businesses, if we can use zoning to encourage development of affordable commercial space so that our small and local businesses don't have to compete with larger national operations. I think that would be a great tool, a great way to use the tool of zoning. I'm not sure I see this challenge as something for which we should use zoning, but I'm not an expert, so I'll certainly, you know, look forward to hearing suggestions. But I came away from the meeting thinking that what we really... And the thing that was brought up the most was taxes. Just a pure, straight-up cost for a business to move into a space, the taxes and the other fees and costs for that business in Somerville are outsized compared to these other submarkets, according to the people that were there. Okay? And so, I came away with it thinking that the way to address this opportunity, this challenge, is to look at it as an opportunity. We have, you know, a down economic situation in this certain industry, and we have the opportunity to invest in this segment, in this future tax base, and using tax credits or refunds or any other, the TIFs especially. I have a star next to "get to be known as someone who does TIFs." That was clearly stated. And the folks at the Massachusetts Life Sciences Center, which is a quasi-public arm of the state that does a lot of the investment in bringing businesses to the Commonwealth, she was fantastic and had a bunch of great... They have a bunch of resources that we can leverage, but that was one of the things that she said, that I, like I said, a star and a boxer. Makes it extra special. So, you know, I say all this as much to sort of report out what I heard, to echo what we heard from Director Galagani, but, you know, also to kind of give my, sort of where I saw the real opportunities, because things that we do... Zoning is a long-term thing, things like tax breaks, things like TIFs. I mean, TIF is long-term, but for each, for that project, obviously, but there are things that we can do short-term that we look at as an investment. Somebody mentioned, it was actually a side conversation I had afterwards, somebody mentioned the Tennessee Valley Authority, you know, back in the Great Recession. Different scenario, clearly, but, you know, at that point, the government decided to invest in things that would then put the country in a better place when we got through that downturn. And on a much smaller, different scale, I see this as the same type of opportunity. So, I certainly can't talk about what's available based on the numbers and our tax revenues and everything else. That's why you have Director Bean and everyone else that does those numbers. But that's what I heard the strongest, was short-term programs that will balance out that cost of Somerville, together with the types of things that Director Narcani was talking about, marketing Somerville, making it clear that this is the place that people should want to be, because it is the best of all the submarkets. And if we use the sort of, the benefit as well as the convincing and the sales pitch aspect of it, then when this market does change, we'll be in a really strong position in theory to continue to see the benefits that we have over the last, you know, prior to this downturn. So, very long-winded, but like I said, I have lots of notes, so be thankful I didn't read all of them. But I definitely want to hear shorter-term ideas of programs that can get us through this trough and won't be something we'll be stuck with, for lack of a better term. You know, once everything's booming again, you know, I don't want to have to go back and make another zoning change just to change back. My preference would be to not do that, to not use that tool, you know, as a first option. So, thank you, Mr. President, for your forbearance. Thank you, Director Galagani, for your presentation.
Thank you, Counselor Davis. Counselor Strezko, Penita Neufeld in Glaufton.
Mr. President, through you to Director Galagani. How have our opportunity zones factored into this presentation? And which developers are already utilizing opportunity zones in Somerville?
Thank you for the question, through the President. Opportunity zones are a federal designation that was created, I believe, in 2018 or 2019. They're set to expire in a couple of years. They were time-limited, so there's a couple more years left. And they provide incentive for people to invest in projects located in these opportunity zones. To try to boil it down, and I'm not an expert, I was a semi-expert when this first came out, but I've forgotten it, you can delay capital gains, or you can avoid capital gains. And that's the big incentive for people all over the world to invest in projects in these opportunity zones. But it's almost winding down, so it's less relevant now. There've been a few projects in the city that I know have utilized this tool to raise money. The folks in Brick Bottom, the new building that's up in Brick Bottom, 100 Chestnut Street, I know for a fact that they use that tool, and they're eligible to use it if they build a second building, if they can get it done in time. So, we'll see if the market allows them to do that. And I believe the Hub Glass site, 200 McGrath, the predecessors, not the current owners, but the prior owners, used that as a tool. Those are the only two I'm familiar with, and I guarantee you, to your point, there are more. Those I just happen to know, and, you know, the names of the LLC they set up to own the property said, you know, OZXYZ, you know, clearly stated it. Does that answer your question?
Mr. President, through you too, Director. Yes. If I may, I have just a few more questions. Slide 5. I want to go on record that I don't agree to adjusting the commercial linkage fee, and I'd love elaboration on what you would envision that looking like, Mr. President. Through you to Director Galagani.
Through the President, I brought you all the ideas that were raised. Some of them I knew off, you know, as Rachel and I were talking after the meeting, you know, adjusting commercial linkage is irrelevant because we have an exemption. The first 15,000 square feet of commercial space is exempt from housing and jobs linkage. We set that up that way because we didn't want to compromise mixed-use projects in the neighborhoods with an additional fee. We know that those projects, retail, the first floor of those projects, they're not a moneymaker. They're oftentimes a money loser for developers. So, we didn't want to add that burden. You know, we made that decision years and years ago, and so that's not really irrelevant. But I wanted to bring it forward to you, just in the spirit of just giving you the raw data that we collected, the opinions and thoughts that people came up with.
And last question, Mr. President, through you to Director Galagani. I also can't support the concept of tweaking the 20% inclusionary for the 10th year or the 20% floor area. I really would prefer to just keep it as is. And I know that with some of these conversations, when I asked if, when we talk about inclusionary housing and expanding housing, and how we can expand housing, if Section 8 and the expansion of Section 8 was a consideration for developers, and developers weren't really looking into it, and we know that there has to be an expansion of Section 8, and it's also a faster way to get affordable housing accessible for renters and those that are trying to stay in the community. So, my question is, will you place the concept of Section 8 and the Section 8 expansion if we're talking about housing and how we're increasing the concept of this and how we're talking about the potential of what could happen out of this dialogue?
Through the President, Section 8 or all different voucher programs are sometimes difficult to target. I mean, the project-based vouchers, where you attach them to a project instead of keeping them with the person where they can take and rent wherever they feel like it. The project-based vouchers are relatively scarce, and we've found out that it's hard to get a collection of them enough to bring to a specific project. You know, the state agencies and the local agencies that allocate those will try to spread them around as much as possible. So, we think there's a problem, and we have to investigate it over the next couple of months, to see if there are some opportunities to unlock that process so that we could direct some of these to stimulate some new projects. So, it's a good question. It's a complicated answer, but it's something we want to take a look at.
Thank you. Counselor Penita Neufeld.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a comment and then a question. I want to just share my agreement with Counselor Davis's sort of assessment around thinking about focusing on this sort of short-term investments and solutions, especially since the economic outlook, as we know, will change in the next five to 10 years. It's an election year. The resources from the federal government might change in the next four to five years. The resources from the state government might change in the next four to five years. So, you know, some of the things, some of the ideas that pop out at me, the permit relief, you know, thinking about how are we delaying payment of building permit fees. Obviously, the UCTF's project-based vouchers are much more attractive. Kind of related to that, as you, where was it? Slide 10. We talked about Somerville's competitive advantage has eroded, and you mentioned that Kendall Square sublease space is now priced below Somerville. Our neighboring municipalities, are their building permit fees also priced below? Like, are we now the most expensive option regionally when it comes to commercial space? Or is it really just about sublease space?
Through the President, yes. We confirmed that, and we've known this for quite some time, our building permit fees are higher than our peers, so within greater Boston. They're higher. And our commercial, when you look at our commercial tax rate and what that equates to on a per-square-foot basis, it is higher than our peer communities that host these submarkets, our competitors. And it's, in some cases, exceptionally high. Watertown has a low tax rate. Cambridge has an exceptionally low tax rate. They have more money than everybody except Cambridge. And so, that is a reality, and a reality we have to face.
Okay. That was my main question. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I got a few comments. So, I was fortunate, I participated in both of these meetings. I'm going to keep my comments focused on housing, because that's the thing that's most important to me. I'll add, though, one of the things developers of lab space said, though, is the other cities like Watertown, Waltham are more appealing, not just because of the taxes, but because that's where the people who work for their businesses live. So, I think housing is important as well as a part of this, to address the lab space issue as well. So, in both of these meetings, I'll say that I was pretty firm when we talked about options in not having a reduction in any affordable housing as a part of that deal or as part of any plan. And a lot of that does come down to just a lack of trust. I said that explicitly to people, that I'm not sure if I allowed you to build 10% now and 10% later, you'll get around to building that other 10%. So, that's just concerning to me, and I'm not really willing to walk back any of our affordable housing provisions, but I'm willing to do a whole lot of other things. And a lot of the things that were discussed were part of zoning proposals that several of us have talked about over the years, about making buildings as of right, allowing six stories in certain neighborhoods, things like this. So, there's options that can be had, that is within our wheelhouse, that have been hauled up for quite a while, and now the chickens have come home to roost. Like, if we had this zoning in place a few years ago, we could have maybe addressed some of these issues. That said, too, just to connect to my neighborhood, I feel like East Broadway is a good microcosm of everything that's going on, because I have zoned that street for five and six stories. And I have several projects that have moved forward and are being built with a 20% inclusionary rate. And then, I have other projects that have stalled, some because of the current climate, but also they had years before interest rates went up, building costs went up. They had permits, they had everything in place. So, it's hard for me to listen to the tiny violins of woe from developers about how they can't get it done now because of our affordable housing position. That said, they're here to make money, and I do want to see this housing get built. So, what can we do? One of the things that has been talked about, and I talked to Director Galagani about this earlier, this proposal of tax incremental financing, which we did at the Star Market site. It would be something I'm interested in. I'd be interested in hearing more about that. But the question I would have is, so say we put these things on the table on a project-by-project basis or either on a zone basis, what ability would we as counselors or we of the city have to negotiate better deals with these projects? Because I know there was one developer in particular who has two projects in my neighborhood. They've both stalled. They both, one of them was permitted years ago and just never happened. And I know he's interested in this, but to me, if we're going to offer a tax deal with this person, I'm going to try to extract more benefits from that project. So, how would that work? Because I understand when it comes to planning and zoning, there are certain circumstances where we can ask them to do nice things, but they don't necessarily have to do that. So, my question is, how can we use this as leverage for better deals with projects in our neighborhood?
Through you, Mr. President. That's a great question. I think we would, and that's why we're talking to you tonight, we wanted to get your thoughts and feelings about what you think might be viable. And hearing these comments is super helpful for me and my staff. I think we would take the same approach as we did with 299 Broadway, and we would work with the developer. We would hire or utilize our in-house real estate finance consultants to review their pro formas, developers' pro formas, to get a real good sense of what is necessary in order to get the project started. I personally, I'm cheap. I don't want to spend a dollar more than what we have to. And that's what we did with 299 Broadway. We brought it to you. We recognized that it was going to be a year and a half before this project was going to launch, and so we said, "Hey, let's put in a provision that would allow us to look under the hood again, see if the project economics have changed, utilize our consultants, and check again before we, you know, sign on the dotted line when the project is ready to launch." So, I'm confident we can put any kind of, it's a negotiation. I think we can put any kind of requirement in there, so long as we're all on the same page in terms of the goal is to get some housing launched, and let's figure out what parameters we can work in. If to launch it, we can still do more affordable housing, why not take a stab at that? I'm of the same mind.
Well, just to follow up on that, I guess the question is, how can we make it? And this is... And this, if, we don't know the answer now, but this is the thing to think about, is how do we make it legally binding so that they cannot renege on an agreement if we went forward?
Thank you. Through the President, we would write that into the agreement. We would have to sign an UCTF agreement that would have to be approved by the City Council and also approved by Housing and Livel communities, the agency at the state that handles and reviews these.
Okay.
So we're, we're right into the contract. That's, that's what we need to do.
All right. So I'd be interested in thinking this out at least and discussing it. Just a future problem I could see is, you know, say we offer a deal to one developer, like we have the Star Market deal. I'm not sure how many 50% affordable housing projects we're going to get with TIF deals. And then someone else comes along and they're willing to do 25%, or this person only does 20. And then, so the different neighborhoods will think, we're getting a worse deal than the Star Market deal. And other developers will say, why aren't we getting the deal that these other people got? So it's just something to think about in terms of if we moved forward on some sort of deal, like making it understandable that, like, we're looking, everyone's looking for something and just making sure that we're fair and even-handed on that. So interested in it, interested in hearing more. One other question I had, though, is, so we recently had a public hearing in land use where we were talking about adjustments to the stretch code and amendments to, which would basically rule out our housing density bonuses. And we had a number of developers come up and basically say the same thing that was said about our affordable housing requirements at this other meeting. This is going to kill my project. You know, we don't have the money for this. You changed the deal, and now we're screwed. And I didn't hear anything about, in that conversation or this conversation, about addressing stretch code issues. So I'm wondering if, is that something that's on the table as well? Because I feel like if we're talking about affordable housing being on the table, then, you know, the stretch code, that, I'm not saying I want to get rid of that, but I just see a discrepancy there where we're moving forward on one plan that may hurt development but proposing to get rid of something that's important to all of us as a result.
Through the, through the President, yeah, we have our ears open at all times. So when we, we make these changes and we hear this feedback that, oh my goodness, I can't launch my project because you just changed the rules on us. Well, first of all, we changed the rules a year ago. You had a year to accommodate this change. However, we don't want to lose housing. So we've taken a close look with our staff and also the staff at OSE to make sure that we're going to write this in such a way and make the right changes so that we're not going to lose significant housing that we think is real. Some projects are caught in this little window, and we think they're too far away, that it's hard for them, in our brain, to make a plausible case that we're impacting their project. You know, they're probably a year away from getting a permit. So, you know, we gave you a year to get, to adjust to the new code. We can't give you unlimited time for everybody. But that's an excellent question.
Counselor Scott, you haven't spoken yet. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I really appreciate this presentation. I appreciate this conversation and the opportunity to hear from my colleagues about this. You know, Ward 2 is at the epicenter of this, thanks to the efforts of the Curtito and Ballantyne administrations. So as the Ward 2 councillor, I've been closely monitoring the financial, funding, real estate situation closely, both commercial and residential. I think it's an unfortunate truth that over the years, I've probably had to host more neighborhood meetings about proposed development than anybody else on this council. So I, I do find it interesting that one of the slides mentioned Bio 2024 as an opportunity, and I suppose it is. But I remember being present at Bio 2018, which was here in Boston. I remember when a Somerville-specific audience was bombarded by doomsday messaging about how real estate professionals, economic development personnel, about how Somerville was going to miss the chance to be any part of a biotech boom. We were told that we needed to pursue aggressive zoning and permitting reliefs combined with financial incentives for companies to lure any lab development. Spoiler warning, we did not. It's been stark, as the impact of these commercial developments have run roughshod over my neighborhood, that the tenor of comments I receive from my neighbors most often has changed from enough with the condos to enough labs already. So here we go again. I, I would say 50 McGrath is a hole in the ground, and that is a problem. I'm glad to hear that the city is starting to become concerned about holes in the ground. I think we all remember the infamous Teal Square pit, far less well-known, would be 10 Oak Street, which has been literally a festering, mosquito-breeding, septic pit as developer after developer screwed each other over and left the project that was permitted to lay fallow. The city has been asked for years by the residents of that neighborhood to address this problem, to no avail. I can't even get ISD to write a ticket. I mean, this is a product, this is a, this is a property that hasn't paid its real estate taxes in years, and yet the city does nothing. So I am glad that we are concerned about unfinished projects now. But why is it that when it comes to major developments, we want to offer incentives? I understand the idea of reputation. I think I've got one myself. But I don't think we need to send a message that Somerville is a place you can get a deal done. I'm sorry, but I'm old enough to remember some of the most heinous giveaways this city undertook in Assembly Row, from the Fritt Affordable Housing waiver down to 6.25% to the millions of community benefits dollars that we just recently returned to the developer. You know, as my colleagues have said, Mr. President, these trickle-down theories of housing affordability have resulted in no measurable relief for our residents. I continue to wonder where the affordable units were built, that the paltry in-lu benefits payments that federal realty gave us to avoid having to build their affordable housing, where did, where did those affordable units end up? I would say Somerville has always, and not to our government's credit or to our residents' benefit, been a place where big money has been able to get a deal done. As a city, there was a big push just eight years ago to change that, to change that environment in the wake of truly disastrous deals in federal realty and the Union Square area that continue to impact our city. Deals which some of us literally live in the shadow of, the rest of us only figuratively so. Ironically, those self-same developers, the same folks who looted Somerville's coffers en route to getting a deal done, are some of those crying poverty now, asking more financial incentives, canceling projects, a prospect for which this city, I would remind you, has zero remedies for due to the complete lack of clawback provisions or enforceable default terms and the permits and covenants that were issued back in, let's say, the period from 2012 to 2017. I appreciate the desire to harness capitalism, but I think our former colleagues, Bill White and Mary Jo Rossetti, would probably point out with their decades of history in city government that the city has worn rose-colored glasses for the last couple of decades when it comes to harness capitalism. Profligate giveaways to developers and contractors paired with a positively miserly approach to our municipal union employees has resulted in the entire predictable situation, when we lack the municipal muscle to address our needs and find ourselves dependent upon fresh cash infusions of building permits and project-based revenue to meet basic budgetary needs, instead of being able to step up to these empty properties, these empty lots, and invest in our own city and our residents. I guess I'd say I'm glad that your department director is working, is looking at this current environment, but for myself, I would caution against overreaction in this moment. I, I think it is a reasonable fear that I might have, that a new push for incentives here is just a case of not letting a good crisis go to waste and simply follows the trend that this city has pursued for decades. When I, when I hear this presentation, and I cannot thank you enough for it and the sessions you've been holding, what I haven't heard is how these approaches can, what approaches we can take that would directly support rebuilding our municipal capacity. I would love to have the conversation, if I had my druthers, include more radical approaches, like the creation of our very own social housing division, like actually employing some of our Somerville residents to build the solutions we need. Stubborn landowners? I mean, I, I see it on, on the, on the slide, but why aren't we currently enforcing our vacant properties ordinance? It's a tool that we specifically crafted by this council to address this problem over four years ago. Neither the Curtito or Ballantyne administration have chosen to use it. There are solutions that we have at our fingertips, existing tools that we've created that we can reach to. And I think there are really, truly innovative and transformative approaches we can take that do not simply boil down to where can we slide the money around to incent the private market to hopefully solve our problems. I guess in short, I find it impossible to rectify the city's openness to provide giveaways to developers, to address the current financial situation. I, I have a hard time comparing that to the completely callous lack of response to residents suffering under the financial burden of what is truly shameful mismanagement by our water and sewer department. So I appreciate this, this look at it. I, I guess I would retain my skepticism when it comes to both the ability for the private market to solve our problems here and as to the wisdom of directing public funds toward these private developers. That said, I'm really glad to be having the conversation. I look forward to engaging it. I love the ideas that many of my colleagues had mentioned and brought forth tonight, and I think this is going to be a challenge that we struggle with as, as an administration, as a council, and as a community for the next several years. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Wilson.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. A second, a second bite of the cherry here. Through to Director Galagani. My initial questions were mostly focused on the residential side, but the glut of empty life science space in the city is definitely something that's been weighing on me, so I'm glad we're having this conversation here. And I'm here for talking about potential solutions and looking forward to that follow-up conversation about this. I do just want to name the challenge here that we're in, you know, as we've talked about, a global biotech downturn that's seen jobs shed all over the world. By my count, Cambridge biotechs have combined for over 1,900 layoffs just this year, just in the first, you know, not even five months of 2024. So this is a problem that really goes beyond just the exactions and cost of doing business here in Somerville. And it's really entirely possible that nothing we do or don't do is actually going to make any sort of real impact here as far as luring biotechs into Somerville and just keeping the ones that are already here in our city. And I just, I do just, there's part of me that just thinks we might be stuck waiting for this global downturn to, to turn around and, and waiting for the fortunes of biotech companies to, to rebound.
Through the President, we're already seeing signs that there is a rebound. When you look at the, the flow of venture capital to life sciences, you're definitely seeing a rebound. So it's made folks pretty hopeful that we're going to see some growth fairly soon. The challenge we have is on the supply side. There's weight we overbuilt as, as a region. And as a result, it's going to take some time, even with robust growth from the life sciences sector, to fill all that space in a timely way. So in the next couple of years, you're going to see some, you know, Plan B, Plan C, Plan D for some of these landowners, property owners. They're, you know, they're not going to be able to last having a building empty, and so you're going to see some transition. It's going to be interesting to see what happens over the next couple of years. But we know what happens when there's, there's an oversupply and that the prices come down and, and people really start to sharpen their pencils. So we want to be ready for that. We want to think about what solutions make sense for this city. Thank you.
Mr. President, I appreciate the director's comments on that. I'll just say that I hope that in our zeal to, you know, get tenants into these buildings, that we don't just make short-sighted, short-sighted concessions and, and deals that we end up regretting in the long run just because of a short, you know, short-term downturn in the market. Thanks.
The good news is that we all have to work together. So if we're doing something, it's going to require a city council vote. Any kind of policy changes that we make, 90% of them are going to require a collaboration between the private sector, the administration, and the city council. So, you know, there's nothing that we're going to be, we'll be able to, you know, push through. We're going to have to all look at things with open eyes and open arms to really figure out what makes sense for our community.
All right. Seeing no further questions, I could talk about this all day, every day. I mean, this, this presentation just brings up almost every single issue in local government. So, you know, I'm not going to ask a lot of detailed questions now, but I'm extremely glad that this conversation is going on. I want to associate myself with what Counselor Davis said. You know, if we think about all the policies that this city has built up over the last decade around affordability, think of that as an aircraft carrier. We don't want to jerk that 90 degrees because interest rates have gone up in a year, right? What I very much agree, and I very much believe that this city is going to do, is we're not going to make rash decisions and giveaways. I appreciate the framing that this was, you're putting everything on the table. I think you don't have to be a political wizard to know we're not going to change the 20% inclusionary. You know, that's, that's not going to happen. The linkage fees are not going to change those past, you know, this year, last year. But I do think having this conversation is incredibly important. It does matter to our ability to provide basic services to the city that we continue to grow our revenue. And we need to do that in a smart, balanced, thoughtful way, not in a tripping over ourselves to give developers benefits. And I honestly do not believe that anyone here is, is looking to do that for, you know, when we're all working together, that's not going to happen. I guess the only two questions I have, so obviously, we're all on the same page that life sciences is the silverback gorilla in this. But there's also all of this energy now around green energy. You know, the federal government is pouring trillions of dollars into this. We have developers asking us for zoning relief to build tough tech climate space. How is that figured into this conversation?
That's, that's a great question, and it's one that, you know, the industry is going to have to deal with and think about. We're going to have all this space, and can we, can it be repurposed for other growing industries, particularly climate tech? And the answer is probably, but at what price? And those climate tech companies are not going to lease space in a life sciences building and pay $90 a square foot, whatever the market rate is right now, and it's about that. If those prices come down significantly, then it makes it more affordable for it to be repurposed. The needs of life, of climate tech companies are definitely different. There's a, in many cases, the work that they do requires a bigger energy component, and so refitting buildings so that it can handle the kind of loads that, you know, Form Energy, for example, requires to, to develop, to design, and to build their products is, is not a simple task. So it's, but yeah, I mean, I, I know all of these landlords are thinking about that for sure.
Counselor Davis, do you have a question on this point?
Thank you, Mr. President. Not a question, just if I could just add a little bit to, to the director's answer. That, that topic did come up at the, at the workshop meeting. Like I said, it was primarily focused on life sciences, but, you know, one of the, the other things I have a star next to was, was somebody said, you know, keep your startups through the growth phase, right? And, and, you know, clean tech was mentioned, obviously with Greentown Labs, that, you know, we have an outsized opportunity of, or, you know, potential source of, of, you know, new, smaller companies. And so, you know, I see that as more of maybe a long-term thing. I think Director Galagani's answer is, is spot on, and like, we have a glut of lab space and, you know, it's sort of a little bit of a, of a square peg ground hole. But, but that did come up, and I think as we look at the long term, you know, I talked about short-term things to get through this particular market downturn, but it was completely, I mean, it's, it could anyone, really, but even coming out of that conversation was that, you know, here is a way to, in addition to all we're talking about in life sciences, really, you know, potentially leverage a differentiating factor that Somerville has and with the type of space, you know, the key number people were talking about, that is sort of that 5,000 to 25,000 square foot where the growing companies need, that's hard space to find right now. And, and well, it's not hard space to find right now because of all the, all the subleases and whatnot, but, but longer term, yeah, that was, that was something that came up. And I assume it's, you know, because it's not specific to this, to this point, but I'm sure it's something that, that we'll be hearing about more as well. And I, through you to the director, if not, you know, that was, that was a clear takeaway as well. I mean, that's, that's the kind of thing that, that can give us a little bit of a, of a buffer against a different industry, right? I'm telling the experts things they already know, so I'll stop talking now. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just have one other question on the housing side. So I know the Anti-Displacement Task Force, for example, is working on relooking at inclusion- So I know the Anti-Displacement Task Force, for example, is working on relooking at inclusionary zoning in ways to modify it, improve it, and I'm very excited to see what they come up with. I guess I have a dumb question. I was not really aware that the pipeline of new housing developments has dried up. I mean, that hasn't been my feeling as a ward counselor watching. You had also mentioned rent slowing down. Is that true?
That's the feedback that we got last week from these developers when they developed their performers. They no longer can assume that there's going to be increases in rent from now for the next 10 years so that they can get a project. The bankers and the investors are saying, no, that's not a true statement. That's not going to happen. We know we're seeing, I talk to our team at the Office of Housing Stability every day, and we know that is not a reality right now for many, many people in our city.
Okay. Yeah, so empirically, if you look at a graph of rent prices in Somerville, they're not slowing down, as far as I know, graph I've seen. You're talking about the financial backers of these projects, their projections looking out into the future.
You are seeing some slowdown in various regions, and in fact, I think we'll be happy to get back to you and see what the Massachusetts general numbers are, but you're right, locally, the people who live in our community would disagree with that assertion.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Thank you to you and your staff for doing this work and for this presentation tonight. Seeing no further questions, we don't have any online hands, do we? Okay. We will place this item on file. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
No, let's go to 4-1, please.
That will return us to the regular order of business, an item 4.1, an order by Councilor Strezzo, that this council discuss how the lapse in consistent mail delivery in Somerville has affected municipal bill collection, reports of bills not received, or accounts marked delinquent.
Councilor Strezzo.
Thank you. Can you please send this to Equity Committee?
Absolutely. This item is referred to the Committee on Equity.
Item 4.2 is a resolution by Councilor Strezzo, that the postmaster share recent and ongoing efforts to adequately staff postal carrier routes and communicate any steps taken to address post office staff shortages in Somerville.
Councilor Strezzo.
That just has to go.
Okay. With this item, we will refer to Equity?
Yeah.
And approve it?
No, Equity?
I'm sorry, did you want to send to committee?
I don't, yes, yes.
Okay. We'll send this to Equity.
Item 4.3 is a communication by Councilor Strezzo, conveying a report of the children's cabinet.
Councilor Strezzo.
Thank you. I wanted to update you colleagues on what's been going on in the children's cabinet because, and attached to this item, on the agenda, you'll find this slide presentation from the children's cabinet called Child Care Access and Affordability Results, based on the work that was, the expansion of childcare that this city used as a pilot program, there were some really, and how magnificently it impacted families' lives here in Somerville. I won't go into details about it. You can, I really want to bring this to your attention to make sure you take a look at the slides. Happy to follow up with questions offline, but I think it's very significant and definitely something we should consider as we put forward policy, where our budget priorities go, how we need to make sure that families are considered as we bloom and blossom as a community. And with that, place it on file.
Thank you very much. That item is placed on file.
Item 4.4 is an order by Councilor Ewan Campen, that the Director of Engineering appear before the Committee on Land Use to discuss how required electrical equipment can modify the plans for already approved new developments, such as at 379 Somerville Avenue.
Councilor Ewan Campen.
Thank you, Madam President. There is a new apartment building going up where Thunder Road used to be across our market basket. I'm sure this is not the only building where this is happening, but it's the first one in my ward where I've really noticed it. There was a neighborhood process, went through two neighborhood meetings, Urban Design Committee. This is, I believe it's a pedestrian street. It had a nice facade. Now the building is really being built, and the left hand, maybe 30% of the street frontage, instead of being a door or a window or a lobby, is a giant metal electrical box sitting on a concrete slab. My understanding is that Eversource or one of the utilities requires whatever this piece of electrical equipment is, I'm not totally sure. They have strict requirements of where those things can go. They have to be accessible. They have to meet fire code of some sort. And so somehow internally in the city, there's a process that just says, okay, we have to change the way the building is supposed to look to put this here. I guess my concern and the reason I want to have a discussion about this is, as we get more and more electric buildings, I just honestly don't know, does this mean every new building is going to have to have one of these and on narrow lots without a lot of side setbacks? Are we going to see this on every single building? What can we do about that? So this is really kind of a fact-finding question for us to talk about. Are there implications for our zoning? So I'd ask that this please be referred to Land Use.
Councilor Scott.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank my colleague for bringing this. This is actually something that I have also raised over the last several years. I could point to 265 Washington Street or it's the one on Beacon where we ended up having a very public fight about this. And I actually did put forward an item, I believe it's still sitting in committee, seeking to find, just to, let's just say you can't do it anymore. There are underground solutions for all of these above-ground pad mount transformers, and given the proliferation of the pad mount transformers themselves, I don't think it's Eversource that's forcing these developers to put it above ground. I think it's just cheaper, and I think it is cheaper to the detriment of the lived environment of the city. So I appreciate this item, and I would love, love to kick it into high gear and just make it the law. Put that stuff underground. Thank you.
Councilor Wilson would like to sign on as well. And Councilor Scott. Okay, this item is approved with a copy sent to Land Use.
Item 4.5 is an order by Councilor Ewan Campen, that the Director of Mobility begin a public process to determine how to manage traffic issues on Benton Road in light of the upcoming change of Central Street to a one-way from Summer Street to Highland Ave.
Councilor Ewan Campen.
Thank you, Madam President. So this has been long planned, but it was just announced that on June 10th or soon thereafter, Central is going to become a one-way street from Summer to Highland. It's already one-way from Somerville Ave up to Summer, and now it's going to continue all the way to Highland. This is going to allow protected bike lanes in both directions. This is part of the Spring Hill Sewer Project. But one of the issues that we've known since the beginning, and I've put in multiple orders, the next street over to the west is called Benton. For folks who aren't familiar, this is a two-way street, but it's only one lane wide. There's parking on both sides, and it is just a nightmare, always. You know, cars, there's a lot of through traffic on this street. Cars have to pull over. There's road rage all the time. I hear about it very, very, very commonly. I've spoken directly to the Mobility Department multiple times. This is certainly on their radar, and my hope is that we can get to a decision about what we're going to do to Benton sooner rather than later, because Central is becoming a one-way in two weeks or something. And I would like for there to be time to have some public process around what are the options? What do we want to do? What's the right thing to do? It seems clear to me and all the people who email me that it should become a one-way going south, but I've been wrong before. So I'd like to just have that discussion, have that public process, and make a decision because I can see the future, and as soon as Central is a one-way, it is going to be really scary on Benton, and that's going to be kind of a five-alarm fire for the poor Ward III counselor. So I'd ask that this please be referred to traffic and parking.
Okay. Items approved and sent to traffic and parking. Next item.
The next item is Item 6A, a report of the Committee on Equity Gender, Seniors, Families, and Vulnerable Populations, meeting on May 15, 2024.
Councilor Strezzo.
So this meeting happened Wednesday, May 15, at 6:30 PM. It was a committee of the whole. We had eight members in attendance and three absent. We had one item on the agenda, and that was that we discuss, we had a public hearing on the increases in water and sewer rates that are affecting Somerville residents and, of course, that one-time estimated versus actual bill and how it affected the community. We also had Director Vidalis present, and we had members of the administration present. Director Vidalis gave a brief statement and also mentioned that there will be a public hearing, another one, on the discussion of increased water rates happening May 29, 2024 at 6:00 PM. That's going to be regarding the setting of new water and sewer rates. That meeting will be held in the conference room at 15 Franny Road. We had quite a few people attending to express their concerns, and a lot of details, you can read the detailed minutes, and I offer this committee report to be accepted as presented.
Thank you, Councilor. Seeing no discussion, that committee report is laid on the table for approval. And colleagues, we're going to do our executive session to get an update on collective bargaining next, so let's go to that item, please.
So this is Item 7.1, a request of the mayor, requesting that this council convene an executive session to receive an update on the status of collective bargaining negotiations with all municipal bargaining units.
Excellent. Let's call the roll on executive session, please.
On the item, Councilor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Councilor Davis.
Yes.
Councilor Wilson.
Yes.
Councilor Said.
Yes.
Councilor Scott.
Yes.
Councilor Mbah. Councilor Burnley.
Aye.
Councilor Klingon.
Yes.
Councilor Strezzo.
Yes.
Councilor Pernada Neufeld.
Okay.
Councilor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
With nine councilors in favor and two absent, that item is approved.
Excellent. We will reconvene in open session after this executive session. We will reconvene in open session after this executive session.
We call this meeting back to order. No votes were taken in executive session.
And this is roll call to establish a quorum. Counselor McLaughlin.
Yeah.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Present.
Counselor Said.
Yeah, present. Present.
Counselor Said.
Present.
Counselor Scott.
Present.
Counselor Mbah.
Counselor Burnley.
Present.
Counselor Klingon.
Counselor Strezzo.
Present.
Counselor Pineda Newfeld.
Present.
Counselor Ewan Campin.
Here.
With nine counselors present and two absent, we have a quorum.
Excellent. No votes were taken in executive session. Next item, please.
And that will return us to the regular order of business and item 6B, a report of the Committee on Finance, meeting on May 21st, 2024.
Counselor Wilson.
Mr. President, the part of the night everyone's been waiting for. The Finance Committee met Tuesday, May 21st with all five members present. We covered an 11-item agenda in an hour and 10 minutes. We unanimously recommended that you approve tonight just shy of $2,000 to fund the Legislative Services Manager position that we are potentially set to confirm an appointment for tonight. A quarter million to the Law Department for anticipated outside legal council invoices because it turns out some litigation that a number of us thought was done and dusted isn't quite wrapped up just yet. The authorization to bond and appropriate just north of $3 million for this year's Building Improvements Program that will focus on school buildings. A grant acceptance of $50,000 to the Office of Sustainability and Environment for a feasibility study on potential spots around the city for a geothermal network. A grant acceptance of up to $60,000 through Cambridge from the Low Income Housing Water Assistance Program, or LIWAP. This is the pandemic-era program that's coming to an end that we had discussed at last week's Equity Committee meeting. A $28,000 grant acceptance from the state for the recycling dividend program, a transfer of $80,000 into the DPW Grounds professional and technical account to cover year-end grounds maintenance expenses resulting from higher-than-expected expenditures due to rain, mowing, whatnot. A payment of $70 prior year invoice for vehicle inspections and a payment of prior year invoices totaling roughly $7,000 for porta-potty rentals for DPW and $32,000 for parks and rec. And we learned that these invoices will all go to DPW in the future to make payment more timely. I'd recommend you all go watch the video of the discussion of the $3 million bond for the FY24 Building Improvements Program. We asked a good number of what I thought were really decent questions of Director Raish on a wide variety of topics. There's a lot to learn there. I'll say this was our final Finance Committee meeting before budget season begins tomorrow with the release of the mayor's proposed FY25 budget. So colleagues, stay tuned for an email with a link to the forum for pre-submitted questions for department and division heads to get those answered ahead of time by memo, allowing us to make the most of our meeting time during a condensed budget review period this year. With that, I ask the committee report be accepted as submitted. Thanks.
Seeing no discussion, the committee report is accepted.
On that, so that we can take off one bond item.
On the item.
On the committee report of May 21st, 2024, Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Said.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Counselor Burnley.
Aye.
Counselor Klingon. Counselor Strezzo. And that puts one item before the council for a roll call vote, and that is item 24-0644, bonding $3,010,000 for the fiscal 2024 Building Improvements Program. And on that item, Council McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Council Davis.
Yes.
Council Wilson.
Yes.
Council Said.
Yes.
Council Scott.
Yes.
Council Mba. Council Burnley.
Aye.
Council Klingon. Council Strezzo.
Yes.
Council Pineda Newfeld.
Yes.
Council Ewan Campen.
Yes.
With nine councilors in favor and two absent, that item is approved. And the next item is item 6C, a report of the Committee on Legislative Matters, meeting on May 20th, 2024.
Council Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee did meet on May 20th. We were joined by Director Gill of Human Resources, as well as Deputy Director Collins. The only item in the agenda was discussion of a proposal to adopt the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 175m, which is the state's family and medical leave provision. We've had multiple discussions on this question over the last couple of years, I think, really. And the administration, through that conversation, that ongoing conversation, the administration has said they're working on sort of an alternate proposal that would hopefully be better overall for our employees. They presented an update on that. There are two attachments that were submitted by the administration. Those are attached to the item. They're brief tables, so the minutes and the discussion, if folks are really interested in hearing, I encourage you to look at that. But the long and short of it is effectively, for most folks, the proposal, well, for any of our many union employees, of course, this will be subject to bargaining with the union, so the details there might differ. But outside of the bargaining union, the idea is to provide eight weeks of paid parental or medical leave at 100% of the pay rate, which, on the whole, sounded good to the committee. There is a few areas where there were some discrepancies, and maybe it's a little worse in the state law, or maybe it's a little different. So if you really want to get into the nitty-gritty, watch the video. But we anticipate hearing more about this during budget, and that's really where we'll hear the presentation. So I'll stop talking there. Stay tuned for the good details on that coming up. So with that, I request that the report be accepted as submitted.
That committee report is laid on the table for approval.
Item 6D is a report of, excuse me, is a report of the Committee on Licenses and Permits, meeting on May 22nd, 2024.
Council Burnley.
To the chair, hello, thank you. Licenses and permits met yesterday, and we had a relatively short meeting, talked about a number of items, including extended hours for eat Greek gyros? I always get nervous about that word.
Heroes.
Gyros, gyros, heroes is what I call them. That's what they are. And also Papa John's, both of, one of which, the Greek heroes, as I call them, is a new location in Somerville, which is going to be replacing our wonderful seafood space in Davis Square, which makes me sad. But luckily, we're hopeful to have this business being there for a long time coming. We have Papa John's, which is in Somerville Ave, which has been there for a while, has previously had an extended operating license, but has changed ownership a number of times. And we also spoke with the owners of a soon-to-be new garage in Assembly Square Row. And, yeah, they are, we ensured that they were going to have a pedestrian signal so that we can have safety as we're letting in folks, so that they can make money off of parking. And with that, I ask that this report be accepted as submitted.
Seeing no discussion, that committee report is laid on the table for approval.
And item 6E is a report of the Special Committee on Rodent Issues, meeting on May 14th, 2024.
Council Wilson.
Mr. President, the Rodent Issues Special Committee met on Tuesday, May 14th, with two of three committee members present. Over the course of an 85-minute meeting, we took up an agenda that consisted of a single non-minutes item, which was a presentation of the 2024 Integrated Pest Management Plan by the Environmental Health Coordinator. We went through trends in rodent-related 3-on-1 reports, including trends in heat maps of 3-on-1 reported rodent activity, with Union Square being a current hotspot. We discussed the residential abatement program and some tweaks being made to that. We talked enforcement and education, the two biggest keys to success in the war on rats, with ideas on how to improve both of those. And we discussed some new approaches, such as rodent hormonal birth control, which could be coming in a pilot here soon to Somerville, and the use of carbon monoxide pumps in certain circumstances. The minutes captured the meeting pretty well, so I'd encourage colleagues in the public to read them or just watch the meeting video for the full presentation to come up to speed on what the city's doing to address our very serious rodent problem. So I ask the committee report be accepted as submitted. Thanks.
Committee report is laid on the table for approval.
Item 7.2 is a request of the mayor requesting approval of a conveyance and grant of easement for Leonard Grimes Park at 31 Tough Street.
Colleagues, the administration is not requesting immediate approval of this, but they ask that because the budget season is taking over finance, that we lay this on the table for our next regular meeting. So I would just ask anyone who has questions about that, before our next regular meeting, please reach out directly to the administration. Council McGlaughlin.
I have questions. Thank you.
You do have questions?
Just want to flag in it, if someone can talk to me as the ward council, I'd like to learn more.
Great. That item is laid on the table for our next meeting.
Item 7.3.
Council Wilson.
Yeah, Mr. President, I'll move away the readings of items 7.3 to 7.15 and also 8.2 and ask these be sent to Finance. Thanks.
Those items are referred to Finance.
That brings us to item 7.16.
Council Newfeld.
I'd like to waive the readings of 7.16 through 7.25 and ask they be approved tonight.
Seeing no discussion, those items are laid on the table for approval.
Item 7.26 is a communication of the mayor conveying the Surveillance Technology Impact Report for exterior cameras at fire stations.
That item is referred to Legislative Matters. Council Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Because this has just been referred to Legislative Matters, I would, and given that we're coming into budget season, I'd like to add this to our agenda for this upcoming Tuesday. I know it's a little bit late notice, but I wasn't able to add it because it wasn't before committee, before now. And so I just wanted to flag for members of that committee, take a look. This is a new surveillance technology. So the way our surveillance technology ordinance works, any new technology does have to be approved by the council. So unlike the annual reports that we talked about at the last meeting where we sort of review those and work collaboratively, but ultimately, there's no action to be taken. There is an action to be taken here, ultimately. And so please take a look at that. I'm hopeful that some representatives from the Fire Department will be there. Obviously, if they can't, it's very late notice, and so I understand. And if there's any questions, the administration will take those back and we'll have another conversation. But given the timing and where we are in budget and that this is a technology that's safety-related, I thought we'd try and move it along quickly as we can, if possible. And if we have other questions, then we'll deal with that as they come. Just wanted to flag that for members of the committee to be ready for that one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 8.1 is an officer's communication from the city clerk requesting confirmation of the appointment of Madeline Lattelier to the position of Legislative Services Manager.
Mr. President, can we approve this tonight?
Absolutely. Do you want to speak on this, Clerk Wells?
If anyone would like me to, I'm happy to.
We're all good? Great. That item is laid on the table for approval.
Item 9.1.
Council Burnley.
Thank you for acknowledging me, Mr. President. And if the clerk can pay very close attention, I would like to waive the readings of items 9.1 through 9.6, 9.8 through 9.46, 9.48 through 9.52, and 10.5 through 10.8. And I will pause there just to make sure that was heard before I further give comment. Actually, I include 10.9 in there, actually. All right. And with that, I'd like to say we have a slew of wonderful events coming to Somerville very soon, which I'd like to highlight very quickly, starting with the Calvin Street Block Party, which has been happening for the last three years. This will be the third year, as far as I'm aware, on May 26th, this upcoming weekend, from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. It is a wonderful space filled with music, dancing, a dunk tank, food, snacks, and just a great neighborly experience for folks who are near Union Square. But even if you're not, just come down. They're very friendly folks. And it is, quite frankly, a very international street. You'll find people from all over the world there. And beyond that, we also have a birthday party coming up. Todd Kaplan, happy birthday. Todd Kaplan's having a birthday party on June 2nd at Powder House from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. Everyone is invited to join. And there will be free dancing lessons as a part of this birthday party. So if you want to learn to dance, hit up Todd Kaplan at Powder House on June 2nd. Going back just quickly, on Josephine Ave, on June 1st, there's going to be a block party and mural painting from 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. So if you love art, if you love meeting your neighbors and having a block party, hit up Josephine Ave on June 1st. And speaking of parties, June 2nd is also going to be the date of Carnival in East Somerville from 12:00 noon to 8:00 p.m. If you're on Broadway, you will be having a wonderful time. With, you'll probably see some councilors there. You'll probably have some great food. You may get to embarrass a few people who you vote for or don't vote for, and that is always fun. So please hit up Carnival in East Somerville on June 2nd. Also on June 2nd, it's a very packed day in Somerville. There is a Culture House Block Party in Union Square. Culture House has been doing a pop-up for a number of months. They are actually going to be closing up shop June 9th. So this is one week from their official closing day. They're going to be having soon a, basically, a garage sale of sorts on June 9th. But if you want to celebrate with them before that time, hit on June 2nd, go to Union Square, to the Culture House, located near the pizza place, not on the corner, which is their headquarters, and you'll have a great time there. Just a few more. We also have Juneteenth coming up, which is June 19th for everyone following. But because it is a holiday, the city will be celebrating on June 18th at City Hall from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. If you would love to celebrate African-American history, the history of liberation in this country, come to City Hall June 18th, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And then finally, Gilman Park, a space that has been relatively empty for, over here at this point, is going to be opening up for celebrations and fun from June 15th all the way to September 30th, from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. It will be a space where folks can listen to music, meet their neighbors, have some good food, and where they can envision the future of the Gilman Square neighborhood together. And if you would love to be a part of that, just go there anytime between June 15th and September 30th. And with that, I would ask that this, these items be approved tonight.
Those items are approved and referred to committee, as mentioned before.
Didn't mention referring anything to committee. So we still have item 9.7, a new flammable license for 808 Windsor Street.
That item is referred to license and permits, please.
And we have item 9.47, a public event license for Matt Timmons for Upper Bartlett Block Party on June 15th from 1:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.
I will note that I am recused from this item, and therefore, I'm okay with it being approved, but I will not say anything more. That's my block.
Council Burnley is accused from this item. Clerk says you're okay. Item is laid on the table for approval.
Okay.
Item 9.53 is a public communication from Green Cab Company requesting an increase in the taxi cab meter rate to $3.80 for the first one-eighth of a mile, 50 cents for each additional one-eighth of a mile, and $32 per hour waiting time.
This is referred to the Committee on Traffic and Parking.
Item 9.54 is a public communication from Graham Davidson submitting comments regarding residential exemption.
This item is placed on file, and let's waive the readings of 9.55 to 9.57 and place those items on file as well.
Item 10.1.
Counselor Pinhega Newfeld, this and 10.2 will refer to.
Refer to Cap'n, please, yeah.
Item 10.3 is a communication of the mayor proclaiming April 2024 to be Arab-American Heritage Month.
That item is placed on file.
Item 10.4 is a communication of the mayor proclaiming May 2024 to be Jewish-American Heritage Month.
That item is placed on file.
Item 10.10 is a public communication from Aaron Weber submitting comments regarding a density bonus.
That item is placed on file with a copy to Land Use.
There's nothing, there's no specific item.
Okay. Yes, there is.
Did you read the comment? Well, you can send it to Land Use.
That item is placed on file.
And that brings us to the end of the agenda, Mr. President.
Are there any late items?
Let's check. I see no further items before the council.
Excellent. Let's take our big vote.
So this is on approval of items 1.3, 4.1 to 4.2, 4.4 to 4.5, 6A, 6C through 6E, 7.16 through 7.25, 8.1, 9.1 through 9.6, 9.8 through 9.52, and 10.5 through 10.9, and to place on file, items 4.3, 8.3, 9.54 to 9.57, I think. On those items, Council McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Council Davis.
Yes.
Council Wilson.
Yes.
Council Said.
Yes.
Council Scott.
Yes.
Council Mba. Council Burnley.
Aye.
Council Klingon. Council Strezzo.
Yes.
Council Pineda Newfeld.
Yes.
Council Ewan Campen.
Yes.
With nine councilors in favor and two absent, those items are approved and placed on file as indicated.
Excellent. And on adjournment.
On adjournment, Council McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Council Davis.
Yes.
Council Wilson.
Yes, please.
Council Said.
Yes.
Council Scott.
Yes.
Council Mba. Council Burnley.
Yes.
Council Klingon. Council Strezzo.
Yes.
Council Pineda Newfeld.
Yes.
Council Ewan Campen.
Yes.
With nine councilors in favor and two absent, this council is adjourned.
Have a great weekend, everybody.